Hi, Mike Dunn. We're going to call this meeting to order, everyone. Thank you. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 6, 2021 Miami Shores Village Council meeting. We will start first with a moment of silence. Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Village Attorney Sarah Ben.
Present.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Councilman LoFredo.
Here.
Councilman Mouts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Here.
Present.
Mayor Wagga.
Present.
You have four.
Thank you. Tonight, we will start with our presentations and we have some elected officials in the House, so we'll start with them. First, I think we have the Mayor of North Bay Village. Mayor Brentley, then.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, is it council or commission?
Council.
Council of Miami Shores, Village Manager, Village Attorney, Village Clerk. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. It's nice for me to come back to Miami Shores every so often. You know, I grew up around these areas. My grandfather lived in the city for something like 50 years, quite a long time. And, you know, it's a special place for me. And, you know, that's one reason why when Crystal was elected mayor, you know, I took special interest. And I've come this evening just to express my appreciation to the mayor on what apparently will be her last evening as mayor of this city. You know, we've written a proclamation on behalf of the people of North Bay Village. Personally, I don't really like to read the whole proclamation. You'll have the chance to do it at home, but what I like to do is give the gist of it. And the gist of it is, and I want to, you know, I want to make sure that the council understands and also the people of Miami Shores, you know, Mayor Wagga has been a tremendous asset for the village. And, you know, I'm sure inside the village, you know, you always have your political back and forth, but outside the village, she's been a tremendous, tremendous asset to the people of Miami Shores and the village of Miami Shores over the last two years. So it really has put the village on the map in Miami Dade County, you know, as far as I can see as mayor of North Bay Village, in a very, very positive way, which can only be good for your village from an exterior relations point of view. And as far as our relationship between North Bay Village and Miami Shores, because of your mayor, largely because of your mayor, you know, and the council as well, you know, it's really never been better. And that's so important in South Florida, in Miami Dade, that cities that are like alike, as we are, are able to speak to each other, communicate, and work on similar agendas. And, you know, Mayor Wagga, you've been such an instrumental part of that. So I'd like to present you this evening with this proclamation. One more little thing. I've put my Medal of Honor, my Medal of Commendation in here. And the medal says, and this is important for me, you know, my personal motto, esse quan videre, which means "Be, Don't Seem." You know, and I want you to realize you have a mayor who is what she is. You know, it's not a semblance of being something, and that's so important in politics. So important in politics. And, you know, because of that, you have achieved many things together as a council, I'm sure, and will continue to do so. So it's an honor for me to be here, and I do want to present you with this proclamation. Thank you very much. My pleasure. It's my pleasure to be here. That's fantastic. I look forward to working with everyone in the future. Please visit us in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
I think we also have the Mayor of El Portao with us this evening, Mayor Nickerson.
Hello, everybody. How's everybody doing? Mayor Nickerson representing the village of El Portao. I just want to say very quickly that I do have my village manager here with me also, Ms. Cristielle Luiz, who is a resident of Miami Shores, of course. I do just want to say really quickly, as the wonderful mayor who preceded me stated, you know, I won't read this proclamation verbatim. I do respect that you guys have a time limit that you want to get out of here and get back home. We do appreciate that. But I do want to focus on one line that I have in this proclamation here. Here's how it looks. And the line that I do want to focus on in this proclamation is the line that I put in at the very end. And the last line says, whereas Crystal M. Wagga has not only been a good neighbor to the village of El Portao, but has also been a friendly, has been a friend to our community, and she has provided guidance and respect with a strong focus on equality and diversity for all. I think that sums up, Mayor Wagga. I think that sums up just the type of person she is, the type of spirit she has, the type of soul that she embodies. And we really appreciate you. And not only is this proclamation explaining exactly how important you are to us as El Portao, I mean, when I became mayor, I've been on the council, you guys, in El Portao for 12 years, right? Vice mayor for six years, and now I'm finally mayor. And she reached out to me. She guided me. She always was there for me. And that's what a neighbor should be. I mean, we're right there. El Portao, Miami Shores, Biscayne Park. You guys were all right there. And so she's been a wonderful neighbor to our community, a wonderful neighbor to our village. We really appreciate that. And like I said, not only is this about the proclamation, but Madam Mayor, and I just want to say thank you for having me before I end. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, distinguished council. How you doing?
Good. Good to see you.
How you doing, my brother? You help us out also. I just want to say thank you very much, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk. Madam Mayor, you are a trailblazer for being the very first African-American mayor of Miami Shores. This right here, a crystal gavel. So the whole thing, Madam Manager, if you please come up here and join me, please. Let me just tell you how envious me and my manager are. We get along with everything. She helps me out with everything. So I was on the, I picked up the phone to call my manager, Manager Luiz, standing next to me. And I said, Madam Manager, I said, you know what? This is after we did the proclamation, right? I said, Madam Manager, you know what? I said, I was looking around, and there's this item that's a beautiful crystal gavel. And she said, oh, for Crystal. So at the very same time, before I could even get it out of my mouth, she said it. That's how envious me and the manager are. It says on this, Crystal M. Wagga, Mayor, Village of Miami Shores. As the first African-American mayor in the history of Miami Shores, you are a trailblazer and an inspiration. Thank you. Thank you, you guys. We really appreciate it.
Thank you to both mayors of each municipality. That's very touching and surprising, and I appreciate you guys coming out. I also appreciate you guys during my time in this particular position. Thank you very much. We will now move on to our Historic House of the Month certificate. And unfortunately, Ms. Benton is not going to be joining us tonight, but I will take a moment to read about her absolutely beautiful home. Mary Benton and Douglas Barnes' home at 10108 Northeast 1st Avenue was built in 1926. The house was designated by Keel and Elliott, one of the firms that helped establish the Mediterranean revival theme and character of the original Miami Shores development. Renderings of this home were used in advertising by the Shoreland Company to promote the Miami Shores project. The residence is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and was designated locally in 1983. According to Ms. Benton, quote, "We enjoy living in a beautifully designed, well-built home that connects us to a past full of hopes and dreams and a vision of a community that was never fully realized." So they're not with us this evening, but we do appreciate that. They're living in this home, and we appreciate that home here in the shores. Thank you. Next up, we will have a presentation by our chief, Chief Kevin Lystat.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and elected officials. Appreciate you taking a moment out of your time to allow me to come and speak for a second. And normally, I know that the council, this is something that had been passionate to all the council members, the mayor and elected officials, and they had discussed this with me. This was actually due to roll out last March, April, but COVID kind of put a damper on some of the things that we were doing in the police department. So as it relates to that, I'm very proud of tonight to be able to come before you and announce the implementation, the re-implementation of our traffic unit. I think that's a very important unit for the Miami Shores Police Department and for the community. The concerns that I hear, the concerns that each of you hear, are somewhat troubling the number of violators we have doing that. And so it's important for us to bring back our traffic unit and restage them. We have put the cars outside. There was a static display for the elected officials. And I'm very happy and proud to introduce the two new members of our traffic unit, which is Officer Maude and Officer Bye. And both of these officers, just for a little bit of a background, both of these officers have been here a little over five years with us. They are extremely dedicated and a team member for the Miami Shores Police Department. They've also shown a high degree of interest and activity as it relates to traffic enforcement. And so they do an excellent job for us. And I thought it appropriate that you get to see them under these circumstances and the public get to see them, because the next time you may see them, it might be a little bit different circumstances. So I'm very proud to announce that. I congratulate both of these officers. I know they're going to do an outstanding job for the residents of Miami Shores. And thank you, Mayor, for your term, for your service, and your continued service for two more years with us. And with that, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Chief Lystat, I just want to thank you all for this wonderful addition. And we do appreciate it, you know, traffic is an issue here and making sure our residents are safe. So we particularly want to say thank you for going out of your way to go that extra mile to keep the residents of the shores safe and continue their wonderful quality of life. So we thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, we will have public comment. We will start with our ecomments. And for those of you who are here to make public comment in person, when you do come to the podium after our ecomments, please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start with Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
First comment is from Susan Ackley. I want to express my thanks to both Sean Brady and Steve LoFredo for their dedicated service to our council and village. They both have provided thoughtful considerations for the well-being of our community. Jonathan Mouts, running to continue his service, also deserves our appreciation for his past four years' contributions. Next speaker, anonymous mayor and members of the village council. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. After a year being isolated from my neighbors, how refreshing it is to see this step to bring us together. For years, Village Hall has prominently displayed Christmas decorations on public property. So glad you're willing to demonstrate your commitment to diversity and inclusion by taking this simple step. Miami Shores is a dynamic and welcoming community. Isn't it timely to show that Miami Shores is made up of all faiths? Next speaker is Rabbi Asher Sosonko. I have lived here in Miami Shores for more than five years. I have witnessed firsthand the beauty and uniqueness of our village, which causes so many families to move from the bigger cities and take residence here in the shores. I'm often asked by many residents I speak to, why don't we have a Hanukkah menorah at Village Hall? My father was born in the USSR. Growing up, he wasn't allowed to practice Judaism in the open. In fact, his father was sentenced to 15 years of labor in Siberia for being a practicing Jew. Today, even in one of the once anti-Semitic Russia, Hanukkah menorahs are still on full display. My mother was born in Miami Beach, back when hotels on Collins Avenue had no Jews, no blacks written on signs in front of them. Today, Miami Beach has a large, beautiful menorah in front of City Hall. Joining the many cities and government offices, which proudly place menorahs on their properties, would be a huge step for our village to display its acceptance of Jewish community. We can continue growing as a village and continue removing any bad reputations that we've had in the past. I'm very grateful to our mayor for putting this into tonight's agenda. And I'm thankful that I'm able to be a rabbi in this beautiful village of Miami Shores, much thanks to the entire village council for all that you do. Next speaker, Shai Yiskhaki. That's all that was mentioned. It is laughable how many Christmas decorations there are in Miami Shores with so little representing other religions. I'm embarrassed to explain it to my daughter during the holidays. Many other communities will have this same menorah, and there's no reason that Miami Shores shouldn't proudly express the diversity of its residents. Next speaker is Adam Shepherd, 295 Northeast 95th Street. Thank you, Mayor Wagga, for championing this long overdue placement. As a member of this wonderful community of ours, I applaud your effort and wholeheartedly agree. Miami Shores is a home to many faiths, and as a modern, inclusive community, the placement of a menorah should bother no one. I support this effort and trust the village council will as well. Next speaker. I have been a resident of Miami Shores for 16 years and love the village because of its inclusivity and diversity. However, the absence of a menorah in the winter holiday display has always felt exclusionary. The addition of a menorah to the other beautiful items displayed during the holidays would be a welcome addition and a way to show all village residents that they are celebrated and valued. Next speaker, Melissa Netkin. I totally support the action of having a Hanukkah menorah being displayed at Miami Shores Village Hall during Hanukkah and the holiday season. If a Christmas tree is allowed to be displayed, then other symbols of holidays should be allowed as well. Next speaker, Linda Schwartz. I think Miami Shores should be inclusive and join other communities. By allowing the menorah for Hanukkah to be placed at Village Hall, we can show our solidarity by allowing this small gesture. Next speaker, anonymous. Miami Shores has a long history of being faith-based in the community. We would like to see that history continue by adorning its public places with icons of many faiths. Next speaker is Nina Bernbach. I think it would be very nice to have a menorah at Village Hall. Next speaker, anonymous. All for celebrating the diversity of our village. Bizarre we don't have a synagogue in the village for our Jewish neighbors and friends. Next speaker is Leah Grossman. A Hanukkah menorah would be very nice. I know my kids would love to see the representation of what they celebrate. Next speaker, Betty Max. I support the placement of a beautiful Hanukkah menorah in Miami Shores Village Hall to go alongside the beautiful Christmas holiday decorations. Next speaker, anonymous. A menorah at Village Hall would demonstrate our community's support and inclusiveness for all residents. Madam Mayor, this concludes ecomments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have anyone here that would like to make public comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Patricia Bonaduce, 636 Northeast 103rd Street.
Michelle Headley, 437 Northeast 102nd Street.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, village members. Today is a great day for history and architecture. We're here to express that all the thankful we are with all of you guys that you help us to develop what is going on right now in our village. Today, with the designation of Mr. Bob Smith's home, it's like a record-breaking for 24 years, nothing had happened. So that's why I'm thankful with all of you guys, with Mr. Travis Kendall as well, that has supported us this year with all our ideas to motivate people to admire what we have and has been sleeping a long, long time ago. So we're happy to, you know, like, have done the Mary Benton House already, Historic House of the Month, and Bob Smith as the first historic local landmark designator. And with that being said, we also want to announce this something that is incredibly, a bigger shipment that never happened here before, and is the library approved to have three walking tools that we're going to be doing, helping with the Historic Preservation Board for the three streets with most historic homes, celebrating the month of May, which is the National Preservation Month. And the three walking tools will walk by almost 100 beautiful houses that have 90 years old or even almost 100. So the library will be handling the tickets because it's going to benefit the new children wing of the library. And as soon as it's ready, we'll invite everybody to like, join us. I know it's going to be sold out because this is going to be absolutely great. And Michelle, of course, helped us with the design of the flyer, and we include Mary Benton, Original Shoreland Sketch, that they used for the newspaper 100 years ago. That's it? Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks that would like to come and make public comment?
My name is Asher Sosonko. I am a rabbi here in Miami Shores. So first off, I want to thank the council for the past two years, the village manager, of course, the village attorney, and everybody that continues to make our village, our city, a beautiful, beautiful village. We thank you, Ms. Wagga, for bringing this menorah, putting it on the agenda. Very, very, very important for the community. Again, I speak to people all the time, Jewish members of Miami Shores, non-Jewish members. I get constant, constant support for a menorah at City Hall. So I'm happy you brought it up. And just to mention, we have at least five of our community members here today to join us and watch how this happens, and I appreciate for you bringing this up. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to make public comment? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Betty Matz Gelski, and my address is 10090 Northeast 12th Avenue. 2019 November, I was House of the Month. I'm here in support of the Hanukkah menorah. I've been a resident of Miami Shores for 10 years. I moved here with my four children. A couple of them, well, the youngest is just graduating from Miami Shores, Miami Country Day School. And my family has owned commercial properties in Miami Shores for probably over 20 years. And I moved here because I felt very welcome. I felt the diversity in the community. My children were doing a lot of their activities in the recreation center. And I realized only after Rabbi Sosonko arrived that there was one thing missing here, and it was a Chabad and a Jewish presence in the community. So I would really love to have that as part of the diversity of this incredible community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Melissa Netkin. I live at 1266 Northeast 94th Street. And I have been a resident of Miami Shores now for about 15 years. I'm a native Floridian. I grew up in Surfside. And when I was growing up, my family moved here. I was born here in 1968. It was a very different place. At that time, there were areas that were restricted to Jewish people and people of color. Miami Shores, a little before that, was probably one of those places, I know it was. And as with Indian Creek and some other places. And it was always shocking to me that those things took place at that time. And I felt frustrated, as anybody would, if they were in a position that they were being discriminated against. So when I left and went to college and came back here and saw how things changed, I was thrilled. I was so happy to see that we had progressed. And when I got married, and several years after that I got married, and was looking for a place to live, and my husband said, let's go look at Miami Shores. I was a little taken aback. I'm like, but wait. You know, it's not a very diverse community, and I want to raise our family in a diverse community. And he said, you're wrong. So we looked at Miami Shores. I got to know the neighbors. I got to know the people in the community. And I was, again, thrilled to see that change had taken place. And it was part of the reason we moved here. So when I was brought to my attention that there were people that didn't agree that a menorah should be allowed to have, to take, to have a place in our community and other symbols, other religions or holidays were, I didn't think that was very fair. So that's why I'm here tonight. I think we need to keep taking these steps forward and continue to make our community diverse and accept everybody and all of their beliefs and all religions that want to demonstrate or display a symbol. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and make public comment at this time? Seeing no one else, public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk?
Item 6A, Approval of the March 16, 2021 Village Council Meeting Minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approve.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
You have a second? Thank you. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilman Mouts?
Councilman Mouts?
I meant to say aye, but I was muted.
Okay.
Item 7A, Appointment to the Recreation Advisor Committee. There is one unexpired vacancy. The village clerk's office received four applications. However, one of the applicants, Jason Nuama, his application was rescinded because he is not a Miami Shores resident. That was indicated in my email to the council yes, last week. So now you have John Ice, Jolie Warshaw, and Kevin Whitaker Jr. for consideration. The applicants are encouraged to briefly introduce themselves. You have three minutes to state your name and address and just introduce yourself for the record. First speaker, John Ice.
Hi, I'm John Ice. I'm at, I live at 1018 Northeast 102nd Street. Right around the corner here. I'm a 12-year resident of Miami Shores. Currently, I work for Miami Dade County in their grants administration office. Before then, I worked for the Children's Trust, which is a children's service council for Miami Dade. I have a history of working with nonprofits since moving to Miami. Previous to then, previous to moving to Miami, I lived and worked in Port-au-Prince, Haiti for a Catholic, nongovernmental organization by way of being a Peace Corps volunteer in the Dominican Republic. And so those experiences kind of brought me to Miami. I'm a, I served on the Recreation Advisory Committee, I'd say about four years ago, four or five years ago, for about a year. And I'm active with the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. Um, and I'm active with the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts in the community and, um, was a previous gap, like, for the same time. So, um, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jolie Warshaw. Next speaker is Ken Whitaker Jr.
Good evening, everyone. Ken Whitaker, 330 Northeast 104th Street. I've lived here since 1987, and my wife's been here sixty-plus years, I mean, elder her age. And I, I served as a chairman of the Rec Advisory Committee for over twenty years, but because of term limits, I was asked to leave a couple of years ago. I coached both my son and daughter for many years. I even coached Steve's son, baseball, for a few years. Now that my daughter's up at Florida State and, uh, empty nester, my son's, uh, married and has kids, I wanna come back and, and contribute to the Shores Village again by getting back on the Rec Advisory, if you would have me. And, uh, I'm open to, uh, going back to where I was and, and hopefully, um, make the community even better than it is today. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments. Madam Mayor, the council may now proceed to pass their ballots, which are located in the upper right-hand corner. Councilman Mills has requested to blow by a, um, meeting, but I'll lock the door now. Once you're finished, please place your ballots in the upper right-hand corner. I'll stop by and pick it up. Congratulations to John Ice, who's been, uh, appointed to the Recreation Advisor Committee. And to Mr. Whitaker, we will have more vacancies in the month of September. We look forward to seeing your application once more.
Congratulations, Mr. Ice. Madam Clerk?
Next item is 8A, A Resolution of the Village Council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, Designating 230 Northeast 94th Street as a Village Historic Landmark and Instructing the Village Clerk to Report the Historical Landmark Covenant in the Public Records of Miami Dade County and Providing for an Effective Date. Staff on this item is the Planning and Zoning Director.
Mr. Kendall?
Hi, good evening. So yes, as was stated earlier by Ms. Hidley and Ms. Bonaducci, um, this is a unique evening in that, um, the historic designation of a property has not occurred in Miami Shores Village in approximately twenty-four years, um, at least at the local level. Uh, for a residential property, there was something at our university, but that's not a residential property. So again, this, um, this board went through the process of, uh, reviewing the property. They reached out to Mr. Smith, who agreed to the process. Uh, he came in front of the Planning and Zoning, excuse me, the Historic Preservation Board, also in front of the Planning and Zoning Board. Both of those boards did make a recommendation of, uh, historic designation of the property, uh, located at 230 Northeast 94th Street. Uh, just a little bit of background about the property itself. It was originally designed by Walt Steiner, who introduced the first split-level designs, uh, in Miami area. Uh, and as a result of that, the, the board really found that this, uh, house sort of, um, encapsulates the, the overall designs of that architect, and as a result of that, believe that, um, it should be historically preserved in order to allow for future generations potentially to have the opportunity to see that. And as a result of that, that recommendation, obviously, is here in the form of the resolution for you all to make that determination. Um, I know that, uh, staff and, and all of the boards worked extremely hard in, in sort of facilitating this, and, uh, this hopefully will be the first of, of many, since we have lots and lots of really interesting and historic homes in Miami Shores. And hopefully, between this and the walking tours that are upcoming, uh, there'll be some more residents within the area who are willing to participate in this program. So staff, obviously, is making a recommendation, uh, which is brought to you for, in the form of a resolution for approval. I know that Mr. Smith is here as well, so he's, he's...
Where's Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to see, I just wanted to see who it was. Thank you. Any comments from council? Uh, Councilman Lefredo?
For those who don't know where Mr. Smith's home is located, it's an architectural gem. It's the only way I can describe it. It's a classic, uh, classic design, and it's right across, it's right next to the park, just off of Second Avenue and just south of the bank, uh, the Bank of America. So every time you go in the bank, you can take a quick peek at it. And I'm very much in favor of, of this designation, and I really commend the Historic Preservation Board for starting this process again.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes, you know, I'd like to commend you, Mr. Smith, because this is not the first time you've done something very generous for our village. I believe that there have been several instances, but what particularly comes to mind is you're, um, giving your blessing to us having the farmer's market in the park next door. And we really appreciated that, and, um, you know, please don't feel safe from that possibility again, because we, we really want that park to be more lively and alive. And so I wanna thank you for that, and you and your partner have been, um, just great to work with through that time. And now you're doing this, um, wonderful, and I know that you also serve on the Historic Preservation Board at the county level as well. So you donate your time to that as well. So, um, I commend you for your generosity and, um, your, your good nature, as well as doing this designation to your property. And hopefully, you'll be a great spokesman for others to follow you.
Thank you. Any other comment by council? Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval of the designation and adoption of the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution passes. Congratulations.
Item 9A, Award of the RFP 2021-02-01 963 Roadway Improvement Project to National Concrete and Paving, Inc. Staff on this item is the Assistant Public Works Director through the village manager.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. The village received a, a grant through a joint participation agreement through, from Miami Dade County in the amount of $662,383 to do various, uh, improvements along Northeast 96th Street from Northeast 2nd to 10th Avenues, which includes resurfacing, drainage in a couple of intersections, restriping, uh, I believe some minor curb and gutter work. Uh, our Public Works Department went out to bid. We, we, um, secured a bid, uh, that was determined to be the low bidder from National Concrete and Paving Incorporated in the amount of $645,062.80. And we're asking for council's approval to award this contract to the National Concrete and Paving Company so that we can proceed with this project. If you have any additional questions, Mr. Chris Marand, our Assistant Public Works Director, he handled this project for us. He's here tonight in case you have any specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, council, any questions? Mr. Lefredo?
Madam Mayor, I think just for the record, I'd like to put what I discussed with the village manager on the record.
Can you please speak into the mic?
The mic doesn't, I'll ask just a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
Not to delay us too long, if he will come out. Okay, I spoke to the village manager this afternoon, and I'll just go through it really quick, just for the record. Okay? This is from 96th Street from 10th to Northeast 2nd Avenue, correct?
Correct.
Right. And there was, not that recent, but in my mind, there was a recent improvement from Sixth Avenue to Northeast 2nd several years ago, and apparently, it didn't take well, and it has to be replaced. Is that correct?
Correct. There are areas where the asphalt is rolling up and separating, so we're gonna be milling 96th Street, removing the existing asphalt, and relaying, uh, a new one-inch layer above that one.
Okay. And the, the low bid is with a respectable bidder, correct?
Correct.
And the other thing is, most, the overwhelming majority of the, of the amount that is going to be expended on this project is coming from a county grant, correct?
Correct.
All right. Can you just break that down for the record, and then I'll be done?
The, the county gave us, in the joint partnership agreement, $662,000, uh, for the construction portion of the project, and the village participation was for the design portion, which was approximately $120,000 plus the construction engineering and inspections of the project.
Thank you.
That's the village's, uh, participation.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lefredo. Did you make a motion?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Item 9B, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Placement of Hanukkah Menorah at Village Hall. This item is sponsored by Mayor Chris O'Waggers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I bring this item to everyone's attention, uh, mainly, and we'll probably get into the semantics of it, but I mainly bring it because, uh, Miami Shores is a rich and very diverse community, and I know that this issue has been brought up in the past and not acted upon, so I thought, now's as good a time as any to show our fellow residents and our neighbors, um, that they are welcome and to show our appreciation for the, all the diversity here in Miami Shores. Um, I, I've read all the case law on this. I have spoken to our neighbors in various municipalities, um, and that's one thing we can get into. But what's most important is there's, there really shouldn't be a discussion of this. This should be something that we want to do and are willing to do to show support for our neighbors, um, alongside what we already have up at Village Hall. So I'm asking the council to consider this, and, um, I am prepared to answer additional questions, which I'm sure will come up. Uh, but I just think it's a nice show of respect, uh, and a show of diversity, uh, religious diversity as well in our community. And, you know, it wouldn't be a first. There's a lot of communities around us that are doing the same. Um, and so I ask that you would consider this, and for those of you who have questions, I'm here. I'm sure the city attorney would like to make comments, but to my council, are there any questions or concerns?
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Birch?
I have come over the last couple of years to trust your judgment in legal matters when it, when we reach out into an area that, um, that there are concerns. So I wanted to express to you that when I was first elected, we still had, um, on the, on the agenda, we still had not just a moment of silence, but we had a chance for, um, a priest or a rabbi or, um, a religious person to come and give us a blessing for the meeting. And I really enjoyed that, and I served with Vice Mayor Zelkowitz at the time, and he, um, we had several different presentations of this type, and it gave, it lent to our meetings, um, and now we're talking about holidays, I know it's two different things, but I just wanna give you the background. It, it lent to our meetings a, a real, um, peaceful and enjoyable blessing that, as we went forward, no matter what your faith. And then came along some abuse, what, what I would consider to be abuse of the idea of presenting this at, at our meetings, which is why we now just have a moment of silence. And it is that some people, um, allege that they worshiped very odd things. For example, when we went to Tallahassee together, there was a, some sort of a beer pole to someone who worshipped...
Festive pole.
Yes. Okay, so I'm concerned about that. And so I am interested in, in you outlining what you learned from other municipalities.
Okay.
And, okay.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that. So, um, we can start, let's just start at the top, right? The Supreme Court, uh, has ruled that the constitutionality of having something like a menorah on government property is allowed. I mean, it's, it's the Supreme Court of the land, it's been ruling, and it's been ruled across the country. And then I'll boil it down to the 11th Circuit. The 11th Circuit, which governs Florida, has also ruled that there is a First Amendment right to display a menorah on government property. Um, so that has been established, right? And so then you go down into the minutia. You go into various municipalities and how they've handled it. Well, many municipalities that we see around us display menorahs, uh, along with their holiday or their Christmas decorations, right? Um, I know that there's an issue, that there was an issue over in Bay Harbor, uh, where there was a dispute over the menorahs that were displayed. The difference is, is that the dispute in Bay Harbor, uh, ended up in a settlement agreement. It wasn't, there wasn't an argument based on the merits of the case, right? There wasn't that argument made. It was a settlement between the city and the plaintiff, who suggested that, and she won in the settlement, a total of $7. And she suggested that, um, the city did not display what she also won to display, which was a manger, right? Secular, non-secular, that's, that was the argument there. And the city settled with her. And so for ten years, the decree ordered that, uh, the city of Bay Harbor put up both, uh, both displays, but with no lights. It had to be white lights, et cetera. And I will have you know that, even after that, they still displayed the menorah and the Christmas tree. During the decree, they displayed...
But the Christmas tree and the manger are two different considerations.
Two different things. But during the decree, they displayed the menorah and the Christmas tree. It just was limited in the way they could display it. I also talked to our friends over in Bow Harbor, um, and talked with them through how they've chosen to display. I've also talked to our friends in Coral Gables. I've also talked to our friends in Fort Lauderdale, the city of Miami Beach. And the issue, you know, becomes when, when people, you know, get all weirded out about something like this, for no reason in my mind, um, I don't understand why there would be an imagined parade of horribles, because we decided, uh, to put, to do the right thing, right? And respect other religions in our community. The parade of horribles being a Festivus pole, I guess if that's horrible to somebody, or Kwanzaa, whatever that means, right? But you do have a First Amendment right to have your symbol displayed on village property. And, and I just don't, you know, we are a diverse, welcoming community, and are, we should be celebrating that diversity. So if the fear is of a lawsuit, right? We've sued for worse. We've sued someone for having a vegetable garden in their front yard, right? If the fear is a lawsuit, um, I would argue that, and I would submit that we're not trusting our residents. We're gonna assume that somebody's gonna sue over that? Well, they could. Uh, but, uh, conversely, many in our Jewish community could sue that we're not doing it, because it is a First Amendment right that they, uh, can have and that they enjoy, per the Supreme Court. So my argument, I don't, I didn't wanna go into the legal portion of it, but I'm prepared to do more of that legal argument, but in my mind, it's just the right thing to do for the residents in our community, who would like that to be displayed. And I see no harm in that.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Lefredo?
May I speak for a couple of minutes?
Sure.
It's my last meeting, so bear with me, guys. I've only been on the council two years, and for health reasons, I won't be on anymore, but I was on for a long time. In the last eight years, from '05 to '13, we used to have rabbis and ministers and priests come and do the invocation. I wasn't here when whatever happened to do away with that happen, so I have no idea why it was. But the last couple of years, from '11 to '13, Jim McCoy was the mayor, and since I was fairly religious, he just, we couldn't get the ministers and the priests and the rabbis to come, 'cause it was, they would only come for five minutes and then get away from their dinner and all. So I ended up doing the invocation for like two years straight. So I am somewhat religious, so that's my prejudice. I'm also the only member of the council. I'm also the only member of the council, I'm sure, that as a college student toured Auschwitz, and I'm not going to describe it to you, it was when it was still in the communist hands. It was August of 1974, and I remember it like it was yesterday. I'm moving approval of the resolution, and if we, and even though I won't be here, I'll volunteer to defend the lawsuit for free if we get sued. Anyway, I move approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Lefredo. And I do have to correct you. I have toured Auschwitz twice. I've also toured all of the Jewish camps in Europe because I went out of my way to do so.
I stand corrected.
To make myself a smarter and better and richer human being. Any other comments? Attorney Sarafin.
Thank you. Hard to know where to start. I've listened carefully and read all the comments. Does work?
They don't work.
There were comments about a menorah being allowed to have a place in our community. I agree with that 200 percent. By the way, for the record, in case anyone doesn't know, I'm Jewish. I've been Jewish all my life. To have symbols of the Jewish faith, and the menorah in particular, in our community, a very good thing. I agree 200 percent. To have it be part of government property, paid for with government funds, in my legal opinion, that's a bad thing, and it's a violation of the Establishment Clause of the United States Constitution and of the Florida Constitution. To show that all of the religions are valued in Miami Shores, again, a very good thing to pay for and place prominently on village property the symbol of any particular religion, not a good thing. It is simply not the role of government to support or appear to support or to endorse or appear to endorse any particular religion. There's two legal concepts going on here at the same time. The first is the Establishment Clause, which prohibits the endorsement, the support, the establishment, the preference of one religion over another, or of religion in general over nonreligious people, atheists, agnostics. This is not an area where municipal government, or indeed any government in the United States, is supposed to act. Protecting religious rights? Yes, that's a different thing. It's not about the First Amendment. Anyone does have a First Amendment right to put up religious symbols on their property, and maybe even elsewhere, but now we're talking about government property, the people's property. There was a suggestion that everyone has a First Amendment right to have their symbol put on government property. That's not correct unless you create that right by establishing a place as a public forum where people are allowed to come and display their religious symbols, whatever they may be, and that's where Tallahassee ran afoul, and that's how they ended up with a festivus pole and a pole worshipping some spaghetti monster, Satan pole, all that sort of stuff. Not the worst thing in the world, but it's an issue to be aware of. My view is, and it's not a recent view, I gave a legal opinion on this back in September of 2009, and at that time, it was a group of people who had petitioned the council to allow a nativity scene on our front yard. And based on the exact same legal doctrines, the Establishment Clause, I recommended strongly against it because it is a religious symbol. A Christmas tree, oddly enough, under the law, is not always viewed as a religious symbol. It's a holiday symbol. I guess if you look at the story of Christ and the history of Christmas trees, it's not really derived from the Bible. I don't think you'll find a Christmas tree in the Bible. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know. A gradle, which we have, and I opine was legitimate, is also recognized as a holiday symbol. It's not integral to the holiday. It's a children's toy, but it's a symbol, and it's a symbol of a holiday, and I didn't have a problem with that. But a menorah is a different thing. A nativity scene, a cross, these are all different things, and we don't have Christmas decorations up on Village Hall or on the village property. We have holiday decorations. We take great care not to show preference for one religion or another. We have seasonal decorations. Now, I've been told, I personally don't read social media intentionally, I've been told that I have personally been treated unkindly, we shall say, on social media because of my longstanding opinion in this regard, whether it be a nativity scene or a menorah or any other clearly religious symbol. Am I, am I opining that this will necessarily be a violation of the Establishment Clause? I am not for a number of legal and practical reasons. If you all vote in favor of this, I don't want someone saying, oh, the village attorney even admitted it. What I am saying is that you do run the risk of running afoul of the Establishment Clause, and whether you end up being determined to be right or wrong in court, that is going to be an expensive and unpleasant experience. I respectfully, Madam Mayor, disagree with your interpretation of what happened in the Bow Harbor case, sorry, in the Bay Harbor case. I mean, we met and discussed this several weeks ago, and I gave you a copy of the opinion. The opinion came down clearly against the city. It was appealed to the 11th Circuit and also came down against the city. Whether or not they thereafter settled or the terms, I don't think matters, but I'm reading from head note 31 of the lower court opinion, "Displays of menorahs, Stars of David, During Holiday Season Had The Primary Effect Of Endorsing Religion Associated With Them Under The Establishment Clause Of The First Amendment." That's not what we're supposed to be doing. Now, I'll say one other thing about the case law in this area. It's all over the place. Madam Mayor is correct. There are cases that approve things that other cases expressly disapprove of. What's also true about these cases is that they are all decided on their own specific facts and the intent of the body in enacting whatever provision is enacted. And if the intent is religiously motivated, that's frowned upon by the courts. And when I listen to what's said in the public comments and, Madam Mayor, your explanations, if I put on my plaintiff's lawyer's hat, it's clear to me that there's an opportunity to make an argument that this is specifically done in recognition of the situation of a particular religion, whether currently, historically, whatever. Do you have the power to vote for it and do it? You absolutely do. Do I think it's a good idea and do I recommend it? I absolutely do not, and I frankly don't care what social media says about it. If you want a village attorney that tells you what social media wants to hear as opposed to what the law says, you're going to have to get another one. But I don't see in terms of what the upside of the public purpose, best-case scenario for doing this is, can ever hope to outweigh the potential risks of, and all it takes is one litigious person to come and challenge you on it. I cannot recommend it.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Sarafin.
And Madam Mayor, I apologize because I never like to get cross-eyed with the mayor, but you and I disagree.
No, you don't have to apologize because I have notes, and we're just going to have a little back and forth.
Sorry.
Councilman Lefredo.
Madam Mayor and the rest of the council, I think that what happened in 2009 with fairly heavily Christian eye request is a little different now because Jews as a body, they're not all religious, and it's not all about religious. There are also many secular Jews. I mean, I was reading about the German Navy Day on the media, and there were Jews that served in the German Navy during World War II at least for a time. And it's a body, it's a people. It's not strictly a religion because many of the Jews who found us to stay in Israel didn't go to synagogue. It's just how it is. So it's a little different, and this isn't 2009. We don't have to, the city attorney is required to give his best judgment, and I think he's done, but we're not, as a council, bound to follow his advice, especially in an area of developing law and especially in New York era of inclusiveness and respect. So I would respectfully disagree with his opinion, but I will leave it up to you, Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Councilman Lefredo. Is Councilman Melz raising his hand?
He is.
Councilman Melz?
Madam Mayor, and I appreciate everybody's comments and thoughts so far, and this is obviously an important, worthy issue. And I must say that I am a supporter of Rabbi Asher, and I do attend menorah lighting every year with my family. And matter of fact, personally, if it was up to me, I'd put it on Village Hall. That being said, I treat this issue as I treat every issue. I look at the information, I do the research, and I weigh what's best for the council, I'm sorry, for the village through the council. What I'm missing here, and I understand, Mayor, you did a lot of work on this, and I greatly appreciate that, and it appears Mr. Sarafin has done a lot of work, but I haven't seen any of this. And I did see a legal opinion right before the meeting started, which was vastly outdated and did not contain current law. Cases that you are concerned. I haven't had an opportunity to review everything and make an opinion, which is what make a decision, which would be in the best interest of the residents, to both, you know, consider the inclusion of a major group who should be recognized, as well as to protect the interest of the village overall from undiscussed and undue litigation. So what I would suggest and appreciate, opportunity to consider is like we all, like every other important issue, this one seems to be a little bit more emotional, and like I said, if it was my choice, yes, right now, and just look forward to next Hanukkah. However, I can't do that because that's not how I handle everything else. That wouldn't be fair to what I stand for and my commitment and obligation to the residents. So what I'm suggesting is, I would ask the village attorney to update the outdated opinion. Ask Vice Mayor Birch, Vice Mayor Birch, Mr. Brady, anybody else who has anything that they want to submit. You know, I appreciate being able to review and educate myself before asking to cast a vote. So, you know, that's where I'm at, and that's what I would propose to council.
Thank you, Councilman Melz. Any other comments? I would like to respond. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I very much appreciate the heart behind this request, like a lot of love and respect for my Jewish brothers and sisters, but I have to agree with the attorney. My concern would be like, I am not a religious person. I'm deeply offended by this kind of content where people talk about the United States being like a Christian nation and too much, quite frankly, Jesus stuff. Like, and I know for some people, that's great. That's their religion. For me, I would be offended by crosses and nativity scenes in front of the Village Hall. I'm just going to say it. I would be. That's the only reason why I would, with the information we have in front of us today, would not want to vote to do this, but I would, I'm just trying to think of some way of exploring, some way of like some community forum, some way where people can express their First Amendment right to their, you know, what's important to them in the holiday season, but I just, I also don't think that the government property is the right place to do it. That's just my feeling on it.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. I want to address one comment that you made with regard to the menorah. You suggested that the Village Hall would be purchasing the menorah. We wouldn't. We would either raise the money for it or it would be donated to us. Is that, and I have more questions, would that in any way change your thought process? Because we wouldn't be paying for it.
It makes it worse.
Why is that?
Because if we don't purchase it, if we let someone else use our property to express their First Amendment views on religion, now we've created a public forum and theoretically, and I'm choosing my words carefully because, again, this may be something else I need to defend, theoretically, anyone would then be able to claim that they have a right to display their religious symbols with equal prominence at the same location, and that's exactly how Tallahassee ended up with a festivus pole.
Is there a problem with the festivus pole?
I have a problem.
Do we have an issue with the festivus pole? Because also, I'd also like to note that in Bay Harbor, on government property, per the decree, per the decree.
I understand, and the only thing I can tell you on that is, I have identified and perceived a serious risk. Some communities have decided to accept that risk.
Most communities, yes.
No, I don't think most. I think if you count up the municipalities that do and the municipalities that don't, it's very one-sided the other way, but I don't think that's a dispulsive factor either.
Okay.
You don't count noses on an issue like this, but I will tell you that, well, you don't.
Go ahead.
Because if you did, then we'd be back to government by social media.
Well, if you'd let me finish my thought.
Sure.
In Bay Harbor, on government property, right, per the document, per the decree, they allowed for a menorah, they allowed the plaintiff to put up her manger, and this is all on government property.
They created a public forum for it.
And they created a public forum and an application process and all those things.
Right.
Which they were also doing during the decree. The decree itself essentially allowed them to do it, but with restrictions because the facts of that case were that the menorahs that were placed in that community outnumbered the Christian artifacts, but I would also, I would also, I would also, not artifacts, symbols, I would also agree with Councilman Lefredo that Hanukkah is a celebration, it's a holiday, and the menorah reflects that holiday.
Yes.
Right? The Jewish, they are people. So we are now in the minutia. Jewish folks are a race of people also, so all these things tie into this menorah for this group of folks. I understand your hesitation. You are protecting the village from the parade of horribles that you think may come of it, but I would just like to argue that it's the right thing to do, and I don't know that there needs to be an in-depth, I don't know that there needs to be an in-depth thought process going into this because we've got municipalities around us who are doing this every holiday season. And so if you're saying you're protecting the village from itself, protecting it from some person who may come and sue us, right, over that.
I'm concerned about litigation.
Yeah, you're concerned about litigation.
I am.
All right.
Let me carry your.
I just don't know that I, I don't know that the law supports what you're saying in its totality, but go ahead.
Let me just carry forward your argument about it is a holiday, it's a holiday of the Jewish people, and the menorah is a recognized symbol of that holiday, all completely true.
Right.
Easter is a holiday. It's a holiday of the Christian people, very important holiday. Christ on the cross is a symbol, very well-recognized symbol of the holiday. Do we put that up on the front of Village Hall? And as Mr. Brady, Councilperson Brady noted, this will create, in addition to divisiveness, you're begging for litigation.
This is divisive? This is divisive?
Yes. If you don't think that many Jewish people would be offended by Christ on the cross in the front of Village Hall.
Are you conflating the two?
You don't understand.
I do understand, and are you conflating the two?
It would offend me. It would offend me very much. That's why I think we have an Establishment Clause, so that government doesn't pick and choose symbols of religion, among other reasons, to promote. That's not government's business. Individuals are free to do it. Churches, synagogues, mosques, they're free to do it. Organizations that are nonreligious are free to do it. Government is not.
Okay. I disagree with your, respectfully, your definition of how the Establishment Clause is applied in this circumstance. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seeing no second, the item fails. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Would you? Would you like me, in accordance with Mr. Melz's suggestion, to prepare a updated legal opinion?
No.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Next item is Village Council announcements. The Miami Shores Village Municipal Election will be held on Tuesday, April 13th at the Community Center. If you voted by mail and would like to check the status of your ballot, please contact Miami Media Elections Department at 305-499-8683, or visit their website. The next Village Council meeting induction ceremony will begin at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, at the LaDon McCall Community Center. And would you rather receive the newsletter via email? Simply enter your email address in the signup field located above the home button and click on monthly newsletter. The communication specialists will take care of the rest. Also, senior residents 65 and over can now sign up to receive information on upcoming events for seniors, programs, emergency management, and more. Simply email your full name, email address, contact number, and home address to Jessica Flatus, communications specialist at flatusj@msvfl.gov. And please remember to visit the Village website for more information on Village events, departments, and to sign up to receive agenda notifications. Also, one more, Madam Mayor. April 4th through April 10th is National Library Week, and Brockway Memorial Library will be hosting a raffle giveaway for children. Please join them this week. Next is Village Council comments.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Brady this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the first thing I had, I would be in trouble if I didn't say, or it would be a bad sign. I wanted to say happy birthday to Mom. It's her birthday today, and thank you for everything that you did to get me to this point. I also want to just give a really, a shout out to our Recreation Department for all the work that they have done to continue to provide really cool events and things to help the kids be excited and experience some of the things they're not usually able to experience during coronavirus lockdown, such as the Egg Your Yard. That was a lot of fun and really nice. I also just wanted to mention, I got my, I did get my second shot today. Please, we're all almost there. Please wear your mask, get vaccinated, you know, do what you can for your family or community. We're so close. As was mentioned earlier, next Tuesday, the election, please get out and vote. The more turnout that we have, I think the better out results that we have. We've had some good turnout and some good results in the last couple of elections, so I'd love to see that continue. And the last thing I just wanted to say is, you know, how much I really love and respect this council, like in this community, and I really thank you all for the opportunity to serve with you and do all the great work that we've done, and I'm going to miss it very much, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lefredo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I had a hating, I hope, I want to say that I saw the property under Zoom meeting on Wednesday. Wow, the candidates, they were four committed, intelligent, articulate people, and I was very impressed. I heard that in excellent talk with moderator. So I just encourage everybody to get out and vote, and vote for the candidates who feel represented the best. But I, one thing I didn't hear a lot of in the meeting was resiliency. And I had to be Sean's parents, Dan's junior graduate, a big reporter to the Seabird State. We went as their guests a week and a half ago on the evening cruise down on the train in Marina. And we tracked down the bay to Cape Florida White House, went across the canal, the still tunnel, and came back. And the ocean's almost already here. I mean, the White House was just a few feet from the water. So I wish and I encourage the other candidates and the councilists remaining after to think highly about resiliency. It's going to be a much bigger issue in the coming years, and don't put it on the back burner. And the other thing is, I appreciate having the opportunity to serve with you all the past two years. I think you all had an excellent job in an impossible situation with this COVID, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Melz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank Councilman Brady and Councilman Lefredo for their service. It was truly an honor and a pleasure to be on this council with you. You are both remarkable people, and the experience that I had serving these last two years, I will never forget, and I wish it could go on forever, that the sun would not end. But I understand, and thank you again. And hopefully now I'll be able to talk to you more at length when I see you at Publix. With regard to the Village and our IT people, and whomever fixed the bell with the app, I'm really happy that my MSD is working again. And I hope I'm not the only one that walks around and uses it throughout the village, and I strongly encourage people to download it. It's available on Apple, and the Android storage's free, and it's remarkable to be able to communicate directly with all the departments of the village about anything that you see that may be broken, or something that needs to be fixed, or addressed, or services aren't being provided. And I'll be quite candid with you, it's a better way of getting things done than trying to call me or one of the other council members, because you're going directly to the department who can get it fixed. And again, Mayor, I greatly appreciate you bringing that prior item to agenda, and as I said, I am strongly for the institution of it. I just would like to be able to do my due diligence like I always do, so I hope we get that opinion, and I wouldn't be if we revisit this sometime soon. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Melz. Vice Mayor Birch.
Yes, I would like to thank the Recreation Department for Egg Your Yard. It was just a great deal of fun, and when I think about the marshmallow drop, and I, but I had my yard egged, so it kind of made up for it, and they did remarkably, and it was so much fun for the kids. So, if you understand, what I wanted to mention, Madam Mayor, is how much we appreciated the Women's History Month event at Brockway Library. And these reenactments and special history events are available to you online when you go to search on Brockway Library's special events. So if you didn't make it to the Zoom meeting that had these very enriching historical narratives, you can go online and see them. I am thrilled about the 96th Street project. This is a combined project with our county. We're getting along, we're getting the job done. It's been always in the making, and I really appreciate Public Works for, and the manager for working together with them to make that possible, because our residents, it's not just our residents on that road either, it's whoever travels east-west on 96th Street, which is a whale of a lot of traffic. So I'm thrilled about the project, and that we didn't have to pay for the whole thing. And the other thing that I just could not possibly be more timely in some of the criticisms that we've been hearing is to have the strength on the Police Department Traffic Team that the chief spoke about and introduced those two new members of. It's just terrific, and it's a great response, and we will all benefit from that. So I thank them for doing a tough job. That is not an easy thing, and we appreciate them very much. And I didn't mention, Councilman Lefredo, do you remember when you served, and you were going off to the council with Mayor Davis, and you looked up and down the dais and you told them you had really had fun? Well, one of the ways that you really have fun is when we all cooperate together and get things done, and that's what we've done, and you've been a wonderful contributor, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I do. And Sean, you will be greatly missed, and you know, I will appreciate meeting you in public and saying, "Hey, Sean, what about this issue?"
No, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. I'm just going to start by speaking to our outgoing councilmembers, Councilman Brady. You're my neighbor. It's been a joy serving up here with you and learning with you, and it really has been wonderful to get to meet you and get to know you. So in my opinion, anybody who puts their name on a ballot and does this and serves their community is to be applauded. So thank you for your service. Thank you for encouraging people to get out there and vote, and all the wonderful things that you do. Thank you for how you protect our environment, all your good IT advice, and just for the wonderful human being I think you are. So it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Thank you.
And watching you get your house done, too. Councilman Lefredo.
It's also been a pleasure serving with you. I've really enjoyed listening to you and listening to the history that you have provided this council, the legal counsel you've provided this council, the reasonable way you opine and think through your arguments and how you vote. I just have really appreciated listening and learning from you as well, so I wanted to thank you and say it's been quite an honor to serve with you.
Thank you.
And I think this whole council has really been just a really nice breath of fresh air, and I'm glad I could serve with all of you guys, but I wish you guys the best. I want to thank the Brockway Library, because that women's event was amazing, just amazing. So if you guys can get that, it's recorded. So if you have a chance to see it, I sat there, the whole hour of it is amazing, and the woman that they honored is one of those women who are unsung heroes in this country, so check that out when you can. I want to give a special shout out to the Parker Recreations Department for egging our house, and I think they did 65 houses, and they were up bright and early, so I thank them profusely for coming up with yet another creative way to celebrate the holidays in our, in our village, and they should know it's greatly appreciated. And to anyone else who's still listening, I just want to say thank you for listening, and it's been an honor for me to serve as your mayor for the last two years. Titles really don't mean much to me, so I'll still be up here at the council, so still call me, still email me, still reach out. I look forward to writing to everybody at the coffee shop, or at Publix, or wherever. But it has been an honor serving you, Village of Miami Shores, and all the residents, business owners, the administration staff as your mayor for the last two years. But I will remind you, we have an election coming up, so be sure to vote on April 13th, and we will see you at the next council meeting. Thanks, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.